Good evening, everyone. Please welcome the City of Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, January 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioners, when you answer, could you please identify where you are? Commissioner Bryson.
I'm in Marine City in the County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here, I'm in Marine City in County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here, I'm in Marine City in the County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here, I'm in the City of Marine City, St. Clair County.
Commissioner Kreidler.
I'm here. I'm in the City of Marine City in St. Clair County.
Commissioner Ross.
I am here at my home in Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman.
I'm here, City Marine City, St. Clair County.
City Manager Levin.
Here, City Marine City, St. Clair County.
Thank you. Moving on to the approve the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda, but I'd like to add 7F, and 7F would be the Winter Wonderland Permit from the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to add 11D, like dog, which is the proposal from Corey Ames for the street tents for restaurants.
Hendrick, so moved.
This is Jake, support.
And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good, thank you. Now, moving on to public comment, if anyone, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission, please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. The City Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Anyone?
I would like to address the Commission.
And what is your name?
My name is Betty Bobble. I live at 162 North Sixth Street, Marine City, Michigan. I have talked before at previous meetings about Hidden Harbor Site condo, and I was able to reach a few commissioners today, but I was afraid I would, because I was afraid I wouldn't be able to get this done on Zoom, but I can. So I just want to reiterate that our concern for the traffic and the fact that our neighborhood would not be a quiet neighborhood like it's been for the 47 years I've lived here with all the cars coming and going from there. My main concern, of course, is the construction equipment going in there. Now, I know Mr. Folsky said he would build a temporary road from King Road to accommodate that. I want to make sure with, if this project goes forward, and I'm assuming it will, that that temporary road is put in, and hopefully somehow we can find a way to make it a little better so it'll take traffic after the construction is done. But that is my main concern, that the construction equipment not come down Fifth Street, Sixth Street, or Metropolis. The streets are just in bad enough shape, they can't take that. So again, like I say, my main concern is, is that those things be done and that issues, that things be made to have to, so he has to follow a good plan that's good for everybody and not just him. When you look at some of his other construction places, it's not a good fit for the neighborhood or anyplace else. So I need to make sure that we're going to look at those things, and he assures me my property value is going to go up, and I know it's going to go down with all the traffic and stuff that will be on a one-block city street, not to mention the more destruction to the street. But I thank everyone that I've talked to. I thank you all for your service to Marine City, and I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Dave, Dave Van den Hemel, I live at Sixth Street and Metropolis. My question is to you, and I have brought this up before, about New Baltimore, when they had, they bought that piece of property, or a developer bought that piece of property for Salt River, they could not get a second entrance. So they have come up with a plan to make the other buildings, all the buildings in there with fire suppression systems in it. And since they can't get a second entrance, now that should be added into his work, uh, quote, for the increased price of this, and that, and that means it'd be just like a commercial building, that the fire marshal will have to come out and inspect each, each building to make sure that fire suppression system is working, since you're not going to have a permanent second exit. Now, I bet you no one gave that a thought, and I had to do some digging to find this information. So something else for you guys to think about, and, because I said, this is a no-win situation for any of us, and that, and that Chesterfield location was 163 lots, and those buildings were going to be a whole lot bigger and a whole lot more expensive than this little, this little thing he's planning on here, and they cut that much of a tax increase out. So it's just something for you to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we're moving on. Number six, approval, I'm sorry, does somebody else have something to say? Okay, sorry. I need approval for the minutes. I need a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes for, of January 7th, 2021.
This is Jake, so moved.
Support, Brian Ross.
Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to seven, the consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Jake, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A through F.
Commissioner Callahan, support.
So is everybody aware of the Winter Wonderland Permit? Does everybody see that from the chamber? Did that, because we, we didn't have a chance to, for it to go out on the packets, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I don't think it's in my packet.
Anybody got any questions about that?
Sent via email from Elaine.
Okay. Yep, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I need a roll call vote, then.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to financial business, I need a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $286,000, $688, I'm sorry, $286,688.90.
This is Jake, I'll make a motion, we approve the expenditures, including payroll, for
Commissioner Callahan, support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions?
Yeah, Bill Clausen, I want to know about Tracy's pay here, it's listed here, and it's $1,216, and that's for a period of one month, and I, is that 43 on there? Is that 43 hours? What is that?
What page are you on, Bill? This is Elaine.
Uh, this page.
It's in the upper right corner.
Yeah, but it's stapled together there. Page 13, 15. So 13.
Bill, this is Megan, the treasurer, that is for one month, 43 is the invoice number, 40 hours.
40 hours, is he putting in 40 hours?
Yes.
And for the hours, is it office time?
Yes.
Okay. And we have the hours that he's in the office? Everybody just says they can't get a hold of him, so I'm asking.
Yeah, he, he has office hours, they're Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon and Thursday morning. Oftentimes, he may be either on the phone or out of the office chasing after something that is not related to a building inspection.
He's not salary. Did you hear that? I said he's not salary, right?
I'm sorry, he's not what?
Not salary.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about expenditures, financial? Okay, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross. Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving down to nine, special presentation, we've got the 2019, 2020 audit presentation from McBride and Manley, I think Curtis is on the line.
I am. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Curtis McBride, and I'm a CPA from McBride, Manley and Company. We are the CPA firm that audits the City of Marine City's financial statements. I am our firm's managing partner and our Gatsby and Audit Director, and also with me this evening is Samantha Hudson. She is our, our Audit Manager, and she was the team leader for the audit this year. And I can see that Elaine is sharing my presentation up here, so that's great. Before I get into the slides, I just want to take a moment to talk about our audit opinion. So there are three types of opinion you can receive from your auditor. There's what we call a clean or unmodified audit opinion, which means that we believe your financial statements are reliable and they're in compliance with our professional standards. Then there's what we call a modified audit opinion, which means that for the most part, we feel they are in compliance, but there may be a few exceptions. And then the third type of opinion is what we call an adverse audit opinion, which means that we do not believe your financial statements are reliable, and they're not in compliance with our standards. So before I get into the, the actual numbers, I am pleased to announce that the city received a clean or unmodified audit opinion from our firm for the year ended June 30, 2020. Now, I just want to clarify, we're just providing an opinion on the accuracy of the financial records, we're not providing an opinion on the financial health of the city. That's not the primary focus of our audit. So getting into the slides, the first fund I want to talk about is the general fund. Now, the general fund primarily derives its revenues from property taxes, state shared revenues, federal, state, and local grant money. So here, we're actually looking at the balance sheet for the general fund at the end of June 30, 2020. You can see it had total assets on hand of about $2,339,000. It had obligation against those assets of about $121,000 to finish the year with an ending fund balance of about $2,218,000. Now, to put that into perspective, the Michigan Department of Treasury recommends that your, that at a minimum, your fund balance level be 10% of annual expenditures in that fund. We're a little bit more conservative, I think a municipality the size of Marine City should be closer to 15 to 20% as a minimum, but the good news is at $2,218,000, your total fund balance level is about 86% of annual expenditure. So in my opinion, you do have a solid general fund balance level at the end of June 30, 2020. So moving on to the next slide, here, we're looking at the general fund revenues and expenditures, or the, the income statement, if you will. Here, we're comparing 2019 to 2020. You can see there are some big differences between 19 and 20. You can see in 2019, you generated about $3,394,000 in revenues, and that number came down to about $2,765,000 for 2020. And that's because during 2019, you closed your TIPA plan, and so there were $500,000 of the funds that were left in TIPA were transferred over to the general fund. So that explains the, the reduction in revenues from 19 to 20. So you can see you generated about $2,765,000 in total revenues in 2020. And then when you compare the expenditures, you can see one of the big changes was a reduction in what we call general government expenditures. It went from $772,000 down to $508,000. That's because in 2019, you acquired the property on Harper Street where your new city hall is going to be, and that was, you spent about $336,000 for that back in 2019. So focusing on 2020, you can see you generated about $2,765,000 in revenues, you spent about $2,593,000, so you actually finished the year with a net increase to your fund balance level of about $172,000. Now, moving on to the next slide, here, we're looking specifically at revenues, again, comparing 19 and 20, talked about this a little bit. The ma, the, the major change was the transfer of the TIPA funds over to the general fund. You can see one of the other changes, an increase from 19 to 20, would be property taxes. You can see property taxes went from about $1,689,000 in 2019, up to about $1,728,000 in 2020. So that's about a $39,000 increase in property tax revenues you generated from 2019 to 2020. Now, in the next slide, we're looking specifically at general fund expenditures by type, again, comparing 2019 to 2020. We talked about the differences, but really focusing on 2020, you can see that you spent about $875,000 on salaries, so that made up about 33 or 34% of your budget. You can see payroll taxes and benefits made up about 18% of your budget, and you spent about $460,000 on that during 2020. And you can see your payroll taxes and benefits actually increased from 2019 to 2020. And that is because during 2020, you're required to contribute additional amounts to your pension and retirees' healthcare, so that explains the major change there. On my next slide, we're talking about some, we're getting, the next couple of slides, we're getting into some trend analysis for the city. The first one is the property tax revenue trend. Here, we're going back to 2011. You can see back in 2011, you generated about $1,778,000 of property taxes. That number fell down a bit through 2015, when you generated about $1,459,000, but you can see you have a positive upward trend in property tax revenues through 2020, when you generated about $1,728,000. Now, the interesting thing about this is, if we took this back to 2007, for instance, you actually generated about $1,937,000 in property taxes for the 2007 fiscal year. So even though this is trending upward, and you generated over $1.7 million, that's still $209,000 less in property tax revenues that you generated in 2020 than you did back in 2007. Now, that's not because property values have, have gone down in the city, it's because of the statutory limitations placed on property taxes in the states, such as Proposal A and the Headley Amendment. So back in 2009 and 2010, we had a housing market crisis, and property values fell sharply in a very short period of time, by as much as 20 or 25%, and so the property taxes followed suit. But because of those limitation, those annual limitations on property taxes, it's taking a long time for those property taxes to climb back out of the hole that they got into during those, those two fiscal years. So that explains why you're still generating less in property taxes now than you were, you know, 13 or 14 years ago. On the next slide, we're looking at the 10-year historical fund balance trend for the general fund, again, going back to 2011. You can see you finished 2011 with about a $567,000 fund balance level. That number grew up over $1 million through 2016, and then, as I mentioned, 2020, you finished the year with about a $2.2 million fund balance level, or roughly 86% of annual expenditures. So back in 2011, your fund balance level was at about 18% of annual expenditures. So in my opinion, in that year, you, you were kind of on the low end, or close to what I would consider the minimum fund balance level in that year. So you guys have done a great job at budgeting and managing the situation, especially when you consider you have $209,000 less in property taxes to work with in 2020 than you did back in 2007. So the, the, the bottom line is, the general fund has a solid fund balance level. On the next slide, the two funds I want to talk about briefly are the major local street funds. Now, these funds are quite a bit different than the general fund, in that these are what we call special revenue funds. We call them special revenue funds because their, their financial resources are restricted for special, by special purpose, and that's the maintenance and construction of streets throughout the city. In other words, the, these, these funds cannot be spent for general operations, they have to be used for streets. So in looking at the balance sheet, you can see the local street fund finished the year with total assets on hand of about $367,000, had obligations or liabilities against those assets of about $6,000, to finish the year with an ending fund balance level of about $361,000. And that represents actually more than 100% of its annual expenditures in that fund. And then in the major street fund, you finished the year with about $824,000 of assets on hand, liabilities against those assets of about $19,000, to finish the year with an ending fund balance level of about $805,000. Now, now, just like the local street fund, the major street fund did finish the year with a total fund balance level more than 100% of its annual expenditure. So in my opinion, both of these funds also have solid fund balance levels. On the next slide, we're looking at the income statement for these two funds. You can see the local street fund generated about $208,000 during the year, it spent about $257,000 during the year, so it actually used up about $49,000 of its fund balance. Now, the local street fund did have a, a project going on during the 2020 fiscal year, that's why you have a, a large capital, what we call capital outlay expenditures of 163,000. You, you did, the Ward and South Market repaving project was in the local street fund during 2020. Then looking at major streets, you can see you generated about $327,000 in revenues, you spent about $142,000, so you actually had a net increase to your fund balance level in major streets of about $185,000. Now, the last fund I want to talk about briefly on the next slide is the Water Sewer Fund. Now, the Water and Sewer Fund is what we call proprietary fund, and we call it that because it's accounted for similar to a, a private for-profit business, and that's because the city owns the water sewer plant, and it charges the city residents for the use of those systems. So theoretically, it's intended to be, these, these are intended to be self-sustaining systems. So in looking at the balance sheet, you can see you finished the year with total assets of about $7,533,000. You had total obligations against those assets of about $3,678,000, to finish the year with an ending net position of about $3,855,000. Now, you did have a couple of bonds outstanding in the, in the Water and Sewer Fund at the end of the year, so you had two bonds, you had one for $40,000, which actually matures this year in 2021. You had an $860,000 bond outstanding, which matures in 2026, and the other, what I would call long-term debt outstanding, is you actually have, you had a $244,000 liability outstanding for a vacuum truck that you acquired. But in my opinion, there really isn't a recommended fund balance or net position level for Water and Sewer Funds. However, at a 3.8 or 3.9 million net position, in my opinion, you do have a solid net position level in your Water and Sewer Fund. I want to talk about, on the next slide, our audit process briefly, just to give you an idea of what, what we're looking at when we come in to do our audits. So our, our audit is performed on what we call all the major accounting functions, so we're looking at purchasing, cash receipts, utility billing, adjusting journal entries, payroll, and so, you know, we're looking at all of these transactions utilizing sampling techniques. So for purchasing, we're actually looking at samples of invoices, and we're making sure that the invoices have been approved and have been paid, we're making sure that they are proper purchases for municipalities in the state of Michigan, and we're also making sure that they're being approved by council at some point. For utility billing, we're making sure residents are being billed for, for actual usage, and at the rates which have been approved by, by you. For payroll, that's an important one, we're making sure that, you know, employees are being paid for time spent working, and at rates which have been approved by the City Council. And of course, year-end reconciliations are performed to prepare our, our full audited financial statements, which are the, those bound documents you have sitting in front of you. Now, the one thing I want to talk about briefly, because I know it's been a, it's been a topic of conversation the last few months, is your pension plan. I don't really have this in my, in my slides, but for the year ended June 30, 2020, your pension plan was considered 60% funded. Now, under state guidelines, that's actually not technically considered underfunded, so under, under, under statute, if you are 60, if you're, if you're under 60%, you're technically considered underfunded. However, it is trending downward. You know, a couple of years ago, you were, you were funded about 75%, and actually back in 2002, believe it or not, you were more than 100% funded in your pension. Now, there are, there are a few reasons for this. You know, this is measured based on what they call the future net pension obligation, which is an estimate. There are a lot of variables that go into that estimate, such as, you know, the, the life expectancy of the participants in the plan is a big one, and probably the one that's what I would call the most volatile, is that, you know, this fund, you, you have, you have assets which are in investments, and so there's a, there's an assumed rate of return. So there's a, there's an assumed rate of return on your investments, which has an impact on this. So your assumed rate of return right now on these investments is at six percent. So when you look at other municipalities throughout the state, there's a wide range of what, what they're assuming their investment rate of returns are. Some of them are six percent, like yours, which are on the lower end, and some are as high as eight percent. Now, I know that two percent difference doesn't sound like a lot. But even a one percent difference in your investment rate of return makes about a million-dollar difference in your, your estimated pension obligation. So these are all based on estimates. The important thing that you really need to do, it will, number one, you do need to take it seriously and remedy the, the shortfall. The important thing is to take the advice of your actuary and make your recommended contributions. And I know that you, you guys are doing that, and that explains why your pension contribution went from about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for two thousand twenty, and it has jumped up over four hundred thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-one. And that's because you're making a current contribution plus an added contribution to make up the estimated shortfall. And the thing to remember about the pension obligation is that the shortfall is intended to be made up over time. In other words, you don't make it up in a year. It's intended to be made up over the next twenty years. And those additional contributions will help you get to a better funding status, if you will. So I, I wanted to talk about pension a little bit, because I know that's been a hot topic. The other thing I want to talk about is, you know, we have a really great working relationship with the city, with both Elaine and Megan. You know, we're in constant communication with them. You know, and this really helps us identify any potential accounting or auditing issues early. You know, and, and like I said, we just have a great working relationship. We assist the city throughout the year. Our audit process is not, is not, you know, something where we just come in one time after the year is over and start looking at records. We're actually, you know, following up and, and, and trying to keep informed with what's going on financially with the city throughout the year. And again, I really want to commend both Elaine and Megan for the audit process this year. I've been doing this for just about twenty-one years now, and I would say this has definitely been the most unique and challenging year for audits with the pandemic. And again, I, I really think they, they both did an outstanding job, as well as the rest of the, you know, the team at, at City, at City Hall. So I just wanted to say thank you to them publicly.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, Curtis. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
We're going to move on to unfinished business, ten A, which is the Hidden Harbor condo development. And we're going to be talking with Elaine Levin, our city manager, and Bob Davis, our city attorney.
Everyone should have the information provided from the attorney in their packets regarding his opinion on, on the project. We have also received word from the Planning Commission Chair, Joe Moran, and also our planning consultant, Adam, with Wade Trim. I know that Joe is on the line and the attorney is on the line if there are any questions regarding this.
Elaine, it's Lisa Hendrick. So have you, I, I, you sent us the email that you had gotten from Mr. Folsky saying he is going to use the temporary road. Are you going to be meeting with him to work all that out?
It will require permits.
Well, I understand that, but you still have to work out all the details. Did you read that information in the, that I pointed out to you in the Planning Act about roads? Should have gone, you know, technically, we should have gone through the Planning Commission for the road, but, you know, it also says that they don't do anything in thirty-five days, we can just go ahead.
Yep, I did look at that, and I shared it with the attorney as well.
Okay. So as far as you are concerned, if this gets approved, the plan is that the access road is going to come in off of King Road?
That is what I have in writing.
Okay. And, and we're assured that because I know our DPW had, did give information on some of the other streets that they just weren't feasible for the amount of construction traffic that's going to go through there?
Yeah, there were constraints. If they were to use any of those other roads, requiring a bond and more than likely only permitting parking on one side of the street. But a, as I said, Mr. Folsky did share an email that he intends on putting in a temporary road from, from King to the project on Metropolis.
So then, once he puts that in, I know that's just for construction traffic only, then he had sent us a thing saying, well, you know, I can put it back the way it was afterwards. Are we going to work with him to try to figure out if the city can keep the road after the fact?
So that's one thing that I did have a conversation with Mike about. And for him to put that temporary road in, he would like to see him put in twelve inches. That is something that would be a required base for if we were to move forward with a permanent road in the future. Obviously, it's half a million plus for putting in the road. It's an obstacle that the city would not be able to pay for. And it does not appear to be something that we can force the developer to pay for.
Correct. But I, I think it, we, we don't want him to take it all out once he puts it all in, in the event we can move forward and do something with it.
Correct.
Lisa, I think that's correct. And so there, there's two components to, to, to moving forward. Number one is your planning commission has approved the site plan, and that's their role. The, the condominium documents and, and the master deed and all the other easements and, and right-of-ways have been approved through legal and through your planners and engineers. So what we're, what we're down to is, is, is this construction road. And I do agree that it should, we should have it in writing that it will not be removed without our consent. And number two, we were also going to require a bond in case there's damage to the other road. And a third item that I looked at today is I really think we should require signage, you know, coming off of the construction site. Signage where, where the, the folks working on the site can be alerted, where there are no construction traffic allowed. And I think those sign, that signage is very common. And just to make sure that they're using only the construction, dedicated construction equipment road at all times.
Yeah, all, all three of those points are good points. I agree with that. I, I'm sure that if somebody started using the wrong entrance, I'm sure we'll hear about that. I'm sure they'll be very diligent to let us know that, you know, it's being used improperly.
I think the phones will be ringing.
Yes. So I, I think, you know, our, our part here is to just assure these people that we're trying to do the right thing. We know we have to approve the, the plan because he's, he's followed every rule, and so that plan has to be approved. The whole issue is the road and, and the, you know, and the safety of their neighborhood. And I think having the extra entrance is going to be good. Even Mariners Landing over there has a second entrance. We don't use it, but it's there coming in off a handover. So we've kind of always made sure, we always had two entrances, and I think it would be a good thing in the long term.
Agreed. Agreed a hundred percent.
So how, how do you move forward with Elaine to make sure that this happens? What's your next step after we approve the site plan?
You can make each of those items part of your motion for approval.
Well, I, I think, Lisa, Elaine and I are going to coordinate back through Mike and back through the developer to make sure we're documented in writing about the road and the bond and the construction, oh, no construction traffic signage. And, and then it'll go forward. But I think, I think there has to be a meeting to confirm all that.
Okay. But in the meantime, you're asking us to approve the site plan, and then you're going to try to work on that after the fact?
No. Well, the commitments are already in place. We just want to sit down and make sure that there's a full understanding of these items. So in, in, in any motion, in any motion that you make to approve the condominium project documents, it would be a motion tonight, subject to the construction road being installed, the bond being put in place in case there's damage to the other road, and the signage being erected, making sure that construction, traffic, and service people do not use the wrong roads.
Yeah, Bob? This is Bill Lawson.
I recognize your voice, Mr. Bill.
Pardon?
I recognize your voice, sir.
Yeah. Mariners Landing, we had a bond on that street until it was done, so, for bonding. So I, I believe we can do a good bond on that.
Yes. And, and it's, you know, and, and Bill, I know you've been involved in bonds. Bonds and bonds and bonds are great, but it's all about the trigger language. It's all about triggering the bond. And I'll make sure that the bond language has the appropriate trigger language, where we're not caught up in a bunch of crap to try to trigger the bond if there's a problem. Bonds are only as good as the trigger language.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Looks like we're going to move forward. I need a motion to approve the Hidden Harbor Site Condom, or the Site Condominium. And if somebody wants to go ahead and put that language in that Bob was talking about, I, I have it too, but if, go ahead.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the Hidden Harbor Condominium site plan, subject to the installation of a temporary road for construction vehicles not to be removed without city permission. A bond to cover any damage to the existing city streets, as well as the installation of signage to prevent workers from using said city streets instead of the construction entrance.
Support? Bill Lawson?
Okay. We have a motion at support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to ten B, request for proposals for two sixty, South Parker, the new site for the city offices. Elaine?
Well, the subcommittee had an opportunity to interview each of these four candidates, Donato Group, Blue Water Builders, C.R. Smith, and Solsky Construction. We did get some good information from them. Some of the bids were not necessarily exactly as what was put on the drawing, so we had to be able to talk to them to try and get this compared to apples-to-apples as much as possible. We did get some updated estimates from a couple of the applicants. C.R. Smith, we got an updated one of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And Solsky, we got an updated one of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. I did get emails from a couple of the committee members and spoke with the mayor. We have a couple of the members that are recommending Solsky. And I think the other one was for C.R. Smith. I, I think we'd be probably good with any of these. All the candidates were great interviews. They brought a lot of different information and, and solutions to redesigning the space. And as I said, we have two votes for Solsky and one for C.R. Smith.
Yeah, this is Cheryl. I, I'm, I'm a little confused, because I thought that when we met last week, and, and I just want everyone out there to know that, you know, the subcommittee worked very well together. We interviewed on Wednesday and Thursday of last week. We interviewed all the candidates. We most certainly did our due diligence. We were, we interviewed at the site. We walked the site. We were able to, you know, put a face to the name and, and, and talk to everyone. And I thought that at the end of our meetings last Thursday, the subcommittee came to a decision. Am I wrong about that?
This is Lisa. Yes, the, the decision we came to was between Craig Smith and Solsky. We had narrowed it down to those two, because we were still waiting to see if we were going to get any other deductions on Smith. And so we were down to two people, not just one.
Okay, I thought that we had, well, I thought we came into an agreement for one.
This, this is Bill Lawson. We, we discussed timeframes. And one of the, one of the ones was way out with the time frame, was, was my big thing. But the question was, and I know that you were concerned about that at the meeting.
I, I don't know which one was way out, because I thought that Smith said that he could start in February.
This is Lisa. Both said they could start in February. Well, no, a, actually, Mr. Solsky said he could start right away. And then Mr. Smith said February, but he was for thirty-three weeks and Mr. Solsky was six months.
Right. But, but Craig also explained, Miss, Craig Smith also explained that that thirty-three weeks was, you know, he, he knew that that was a far-out estimate. And then he literally said he could probably get the work done in four to six months, which was completely in line with literally just about everybody else. So.
True, but unfortunately, there's a hundred thousand dollar difference between the two.
No, I get that. But we also were talking about, I think that there was some additional work that Craig Smith was going to do. Plus, didn't we talk about like cabinet choices and, you know, more higher-end things that he had? More custom things that he had put in his quote, where Solsky was, you know, the bare-bones, stock, stock stuff. And so that can certainly change the price.
Yeah, the prices, you know, I think what Craig did was he went by the bid specs that the company gave us, which was all high-end. And I know Mr. Solsky said it wasn't, he wasn't going to give us the real low end. He was going to try to give us more of a mid-range. But he had a lot of good ideas on what he could do to save us money. Both of them did. They both had good ideas on savings money, but I thought Mr. Smith was going to come down a little bit more, but we still got the same quote, and, and that's what we were looking for. And Mr. Solsky also cut out another forty-three hundred for some items that he had in there that were in the bid specs that shouldn't have been. So like I said, we came down to agreeing on the two, and, but we were pending what they were going to send us for final amount.
Yeah. Well, you know, sometimes in these, in these types of situations, you get what you pay for, you know? And also, I thought the whole purpose of going out for bid was to try to get someone local. I mean, Lisa, I thought that what you were reiterating from day one, that we wanted to try to get somebody local. So we have Craig Smith, who is local, and then we have Mr. Solsky that is in court hearing.
He's Fort Grashit. That's, that's still local to me. I mean, it's still in the county.
Does anybody, do any other commissioners have any questions? Because I know it's difficult for you to make decisions when you're just listening to the recommendations of a subcommittee.
This is Jake. Just refresh my memory. What are the two prices again?
Solsky was Solsky was 32, I'm just gonna do the, it's 325, and Craig Smith was 423, and Craig Smith came down, wasn't it like 90, 92 from his original, but that's because he was bidding on the architect specs, which were like Taj Mahal-ish type finishes. So I think that, yeah, but the 325 from Solsky, I, I wrote my notes, I say bare-bones, and then, and I wrote in my notes that Craig Smith was talking about taking off all the drywall, and, and there was extras in his bid, so, those are my notes.
This is Commissioner Kreidler. My question is, the, do both of these bids allow for overruns due to unforeseen costs and, and things, expenses that they might come, that might come about because of what they find with the existing structure?
No, they didn't.
Okay, so they have to stick to these numbers, no matter what happens? Okay.
Well, no, not necessarily. I mean, if they find something after they tear some of the walls out that was unforeseen, that could jump the price.
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm sorry, Bill, we didn't get that.
They'd have to come back with, there is a problem, to, to see what, 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 what cost of it would be, but this hundred thousand is a pretty big difference than when we asked them to come down, they came down, and the last one that I got was that when Craig came down, he, and I looked at the scheduling, he didn't come down at all at the last come down, so he stayed right out there at the 423, so that's where I looked at that, plus his time to get it done.
Right, well, I, I already said that, he, he said 33 weeks, but I called him out on that, because that's like eight months, and I, or whatever it was, and I, I said, I said, that's really a, you know, that's really a lot of time, and he, he said in the meeting, you know, he goes, I know, I, I bid it out further, but he said it, it could, it could get done in four to six months, which was aligned, everybody said that, four to six months.
Okay, well, we need to, we, if, I'm sorry.
This is Commissioner Callahan.
Yep, go ahead, Wendy.
So, do, do we have any idea what kind of work, or any real recommendations, or anything beyond what, you know, what we've had as hearsay about Solsky?
Mr. Solsky has done work here in town for other people. I don't know if he's on the line.
He is on the line. He is. I see him, I don't know if he is or not. There he is.
Yes, this, this is Ben, I'm here.
Okay, can you tell us, what other work have you done in the air, in, in Marine City?
Well, the most recent one we did was a build-out at the Life Skills Center, which is right down the road from your guys' build-out, almost identical, the size and scope of work. The executive director for that project was one of the references we had. There's about a 6,000 square foot commercial remodel of a total gut and redo, and then we've done various residential projects throughout the city of Marine City, Elginak. Most of our work is based out of St. Clark County.
Thank you. And then, so, and help me here, was there any conversation with Craig Smith, regard, like, he was to take his finishes and bring them down to what Solsky had? Was there any kind of conversation there?
Yes, you discussed that with both of them at the same time, to bring their prices down, and the last one, as far as I could see, what I got, this is so close, that he didn't come down anymore, and so I looked at that, and, and I can't, I can't see throwing a hundred thousand dollars into something else. That's, that's too much of a gap.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, we need to, we need to make a motion to, to, we gotta pick somebody.
I guess I'll make a motion that, oh, with Solsky Construction.
Support, Bill Clawson.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
No.
Commissioner Clawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on. City manager evaluation resolution. City Attorney Davis?
Yeah, thank you. I provided two documents related to this issue. One is a resolution that would adopt the process, and the second one was a draft resolution that would become the process at the end of the year. I, I know, I know that there will be some concerns that we are not engaging in a rating system, where you can look at certain things and rate them from one to five, five being a great smiley face, and number one being a frown, or some other rating system, and the reason is, is that I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of success with city manager slash board relationship developments, when we, at the end of the year, take time to sit down and dialogue about the direction the Board of Commissioners is looking for the city to take, and reducing some of those ideas to writings for the next year, not, not necessarily saying that, that they'll all get done, but it, it would be a revolving set of goals and objectives that represent the policy direction that this Board of Commissioners wants to undertake. You have, you have two, two professionals that work at your discretion, both charged with working at your discretion, and both charged with implementing and carrying out your directions and your policies. I'm one of them, I work at your discretion, I, I am, I am on board to implement what happens at your meetings, and to review things, and to manage and keep us safe from litigation as a policy, and to do so at cost-effective rates and billings, and to keep things square. You then engage at your discretion a city manager, who has a list under the charter, and I, I hope you've read that, that list, because it's good to refresh on that list, of basic functions and duties, and then you have both of us in a position where, where we need to hear from you once a year, your policy directions, where do you want the city headed, what types of things do you want the focus to be on, the, the sort of non-traditional functions and duties, but the things that are outside of those traditional functions and duties. When you hire a city manager, you, you, you're, you're, you're sort of assuming, based, because your charter says you hire someone with qualifications and with experience, you, you, you should have a general assumption that the general workings of the office, the general functions and duties are gonna be carried out, and then on top of that, you want your city manager to have focuses each year on your selected policies and directions. The reason I like the process is that it forces you, and, and I'm not even talking about Elaine right now, it forces you, the elected officials, to really gather your thoughts once a year, refocus on what is the direction of the city of Marine City, and reduce it to very, sometimes very tough-to-articulate sentences and goals and objectives, and put them in a resolution, and, and, and ask that the city manager, and the city attorney for that matter, focus on those issues in the following year. We could, we could then have some system in place, where we go through those issues at the, at the next round, and we say, well, how did you do on this one? How did you do on this one? How did you do on this one? And we could score those issues, I can certainly implement that if you want, but sometimes those issues, you know, don't get done, sometimes they get done very well, but you have a discussion about it, and, and some of them, you know, make their way into the next resolution for the next year. So it was just my thought process, my, I, I've seen this go very successful. It builds a great relationship between the city manager and the city managers, department heads and, and staff, and the board, and you guys, and I, I think, I think it's, I think it's worth a try, but I do understand, you know, we, we all have in our mind, the, the nature of a review is to have something, you know, measurable and, and a score of some sort. I just don't know if that is the best approach in dealing with policy directives, professionals, and the goals and milestones for, for you as commissioners. So, you know, I, I, I produced a resolution that laid out a process. One of the things, you know, that you can do is pass the resolution that puts, that implements this process, so that we do it at the end of this year, and then I passed out a sample resolution that might be the starting ground for the end of the year. Elaine did have a comment, she said, well, you know, I'm kind of a, my, 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 my birth year is in July, you know, we should make it, but I, I really think you're doing this for all future city managers. I think your resolution is going in place if you do this, you know, for life beyond Elaine and I, if there is such a thing, and so would apply, you know, it would always be an, an end-of-the-year process, looking forward to a, a new year. So I'm, I'm, I'm welcome to discuss it, and, you know, I won't be offended if, if you think it's not the way to go. It's just, just my, it's my belief and my, my thinking that I think this works.
Hey, Bob, it's Jake. Are you thinking
Hi, Jake.
About basing it on the calendar year, or the city's fiscal year?
The calendar year. The reason, the reason being, Jake, is that, you know, at the end of the year, you're, you're, you know, there is a renewal spirit for the next year, and it is a time when, you know, there's, there's, it's time to regroup and get ready for another year. I just, it, it, it just works out well in the review, in the review process.
I, I agree. I mean, I know when I worked for the feds, it always drove me nuts trying to have everything done by September 30th, and the last quarter of the year was, you're just sitting in limbo almost.
Yeah, doing nothing. Yeah, because it, you're just, it, 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 it just, I know what you're talking about, having worked for the government for my share of years, and, and I, I think, I think the, the November-December sort of process works out well. I, I'll tell you, I just went through one at the end of last year with a, with a village manager, and I gotta tell you, we, we held a special session, and it went for hours, because it wasn't because of the, the manager, it was because the, the village council really got into the nuances of debating the direction of the village going forward the next year, and it was one of the most dynamic conversations I think I've ever heard a council have, and when they were done, they articulated nine items of focus for the village manager going forward into 2021, that I thought were just stunning, but, but they debated a lot among themselves, and it would be a time, you know. Lisa, you have things that I, I know are, are priorities for you. I think I hear priorities, as I, as I listen, I, I hear priorities developing from other people on the board, and those should be debated and discussed. Elaine only has so much time, she only has so much time and so many department heads, so we can't, you know, we can't have her do everything in the first year, but your priorities as a, as, as commissioners need to be heard by the other commissioners, they need to be discussed once a year, otherwise you're just kinda coming to the meetings, and you're kinda reacting to what's on the agenda. You, you, you folks need to steer the city ship, and you need to do it once a year by talking with each other about what's important to the city of Marine City for the next year, and I think you're gonna find it, I think you're gonna find it very interesting when you start doing that.
I mean, I, I know, I, I like the idea myself. I think it's a good idea. I think it transforms us from being in the reactive mode to being proactive, and like you said, actually setting a course for the city, and just, instead of just looking at the agenda every, every other week and saying yes, no, et cetera.
You're, you're elected, you're elected to be the policy direction managers for the city of Marine City. When you're elected to be a commissioner, in my opinion, you have to carry out the business of the city. Don't, don't, don't get me wrong, you have to follow the agenda, you have to look at the finances, and you have to do all the things that carry out the business side of the city, but then there's the flavor side of the city, the development of the city, the, 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 the course in which the city is maturing, and how you're, how you're, through your policies, trying to make it better. I mean, you guys have done great things in the city of Marine City, and that isn't by happenstance, that's by thinking. And, and I think, I think, I mean, you have a very, very nice composition on the, on, on the board right now. I think you guys will, will do great things, but I'd like each of you to hear from the other about what, what they think, you know, as an elected official, where do they think the city should be headed?
Bob, it's Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi. Okay, so I got some questions.
I sort of remember you, I sort of remember you, Lisa.
I got some questions on how you're gonna proceed with this, 'cause I mean, I know this is fluid throughout the year. I mean, I've been through these through General Motors, you know, th- those goals and stuff come down from the top, everybody has to put in their whatever. What, what I'm getting at is, how do we, you know, because throughout the year, you're gonna have new projects coming in, new things that are gonna be going, we need to keep track of all this stuff to make sure some of the stuff's getting done, how is it getting handled, and, and, you know, when we get to the end of the year, we, you know, I don't wanna spend, I mean, most of the time, these things only take an hour, which I, I think is not right, but I also think that you also need some documentation from us, too, so that she has time to absorb it, she has time to see how, what we're thinking, how things went, you know, along those lines, so how do you, when you get to the point, I mean, what is the next thing? We gotta set all the goals, do we all turn in goals that we think, and then we go at it, or, or what?
No, you, 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 you do the meeting process in November, with the concept that in, 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 in a meeting in December, you'll pass the resolution that governs the following year, so Elaine will be tracking, it's gonna be the most difficult the first time, because we don't have last years to look at, so the first time we do this will be the most difficult, but then in the following years, Lisa, you'll be looking back at prior resolutions that were issued every December, and you'll be able to look back and track, you know, what were our objectives three years ago? How did those pan out? What were our objectives two years ago? And you'll be able to measure the success of the city manager by looking through these past resolutions, and seeing, you know, did we get these things accomplished? And that's the measurement of success for the city, is accomplishing the policies of, at, at your direction. So, so Elaine would, would probably initiate a document in November saying, you know, here's what you asked me to focus on, here's, here are the five out of the seven that I got done, here's how it went, here's, here's how it, it succeeded, and here's why I didn't get the other two done, but I'd like to see those two, you know, on my list for next year, 'cause I will get them done next year, and then it becomes a, it, it becomes a revolving document that becomes dynamic over the years, because each- over the years because each of you will have all of the past resolutions. And you'll be able to see what, what, what were our policy directives four years ago? You know, how did those pan out? Well, you know, and, and, and it becomes a very, it becomes a very valuable tool. But it starts with Elaine. It'll start with Elaine and it'll, you know, she'll present something to you. You guys will chime in together. Um, you, and the city manager and, 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 and you as board members, you, you, you know, right now that at the end of the year, you know, you're gonna wanna be able to articulate some of your thoughts. So it forces you to get ready. It forces Elaine to get ready. And then in December, we have a document that is at least something in writing going forward for the next year.
Yeah, so we're, we're still gonna be documenting our thoughts and her thoughts and all that at the end of the year. So there would still be some type of documentation.
Yeah, and that's good, that is-
Size resolution.
That's the second document that I gave you. And I just gave you like a brief format, nothing special. Um, and, 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 and that'll be the document that you produce in December and you pass in December. So not only are you, are you getting together and talking about the direction of the city, you're actually passing a resolution, you know, having, having, um, um, the city manager focus on, on your thoughts going forward for the next year. And then at the end of the next year, you're gonna sit down and say, okay, how did, how did it go?
So how are we gonna formulate this now?
Well, you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do anything, um, y- y- you know, right now, um, except start, you, you know, we'll, we'll, in November, we'll start the first process. Um, you guys already did a review very recently, right? And I think she understands that review, so that can guide her until the end of this year and then we can implement this new process.
Okay, so, so we're not gonna start this process technically till the end of the year, but during the year, we're gonna keep track of all the things we think are important that should be done.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, and, yes, and that's what you were elected to do.
Yes, and, and that's technically what I do every year anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you're, you're, you know, I mean, I could probably, Lisa, I could, having listened, you know, to you speak over the years, I could probably sit down and, and write what your policy focuses are. I think I could write down what some of the other people's policies and focuses are. Um, I, I, I don't think that you're all gonna be the same, you know? And I hope you're not all the same because I, I think the dynamics of, of the personalities you have on, on the, a- as commissioners right now is fantastic. And you all come from different backgrounds, different business experiences, different life experiences. But I think you, you know, together, I mean, you should be able to formulate something very positive.
Okay, so now that we have your example, so then our goal now is to sit and start working on things throughout the year to come up with whatever we think are, uh, what's important by November.
Yes. And then we'll have a November meeting on this. And it'll emerge, it'll morph into something in writing in December that you guys will give a final look at, vote on, and put in place for the following year.
Okay, so now, say we got this document and we've got it all figured out in November. Then when we meet to have the actual, um, review, ah, then what? Is this just discussion or are we again writing down what we think, whether these things got done or didn't get done, or how do we handle that part?
That's all done in your meeting in November. In December, you're simply passing the resolution for the next year.
So to clarify and to build on what you were saying Lisa, and I apologize for interrupting, this is Commissioner Ross. This would be a 2021 November, uh, call it brainstorming session. A 2021 December resolution session to set goals for 2022. And then the first time that we would ever grade, so to speak, uh, the city manager, whoever that may be, on the December 2021 resolution would be in November 2022.
Yes, sir. You were dead on right.
Okay, so, so I just, the, the only issue I see somewhat, I, I like it personally speaking, and Lisa, I'll let, let you go back to it in two seconds, but I, I just do have a little bit of concern with the basically year of limbo of Elaine not getting any feedback, if that's what the resolution was intended to do. My understanding was we were trying to set SMART goals for Elaine, SMART being the, you know, uh, time, time bound-
I mean, if you, if, if you guys wanna do this, if you wanna do this right now, we can just do it now. But I, I, I think she's just coming off of a review. So I think she heard your-
Okay.
-concerns very recently and that, you know, November would be a logical time to do it again.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have new peo- you have new people on the board too that don't know what transpired from the last one. But yes, it's gonna be, looks like a, a big gap for a whole year. We're not gonna have any direction for until the next year. So do we use the old format for this last year?
Well, this is Elaine. Um, I, I think that what we should probably do is get a little jumpstart on this and kind of have a, a mid-season review, so we could really kind of start working on a resolution with the goals and objectives for, it'd be about a six-month term instead of a year term.
That's why, that would be, that would be perfect.
I mean, that's, I mean, all the, all the ones that I've ever done, we get a beginning year, a mid-year and an end year. So you always had that in there. But yeah, I don't like the idea of leaving this go for a whole year until November and, and she's got no direction for this current year.
That was effectively my concern, Lisa, also.
What you're, what you're, what you're saying then Lisa is your last, when was, when was the last review process?
Well, last year. I mean, because, see, it was always based on her, um-
Right, but what I'm saying Lisa-
Prior date.
I know, but what I, what I'm saying, and I don't mean to cut you off, is that I don't think your prior review process resulted very well in policy directions going forward.
Oh, I agree, but I don't like to wait a whole year, um-
Well, then let's do it now. Let's do it now. Let's not, let's not can it over time. Let's just do what Elaine just said. Let's do one that we, we, we end up with a resolution maybe, um, by, by, uh-
June-ish.
By June, by June-ish. And then we do follow through and do it at the end of the year. And then we, then we're on a yearly cycle thereafter.
Well, yeah, because that way we have, um, a- and everybody's gotta get the idea of what you're looking for and how we're gonna do this and, you know, cause it's all a learning curve the first time around.
I will, I, I can redraft things accordingly and we can, we can maybe approve them in the, um, in a, uh, February meeting.
That would sound, that sounds good to me. That addresses my concerns. As it's been presently proposed.
Right. I agree with that too.
Okay.
Uh, this is Elaine. One, one thing that you were talking about is wanting to do this on a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year. Uh, one of the things that typically comes out of a review could, can be an increase in pay. It might actually be better to keep it in line with the fiscal year because if, say, you get into June, you do the resolution and the city manager at the time, you want to give a raise in pay, that way it could become effective at the next fiscal year, which would be the next month. That might be a little cleaner process as opposed to the calendar year unless, Bob, you have some reason why you prefer the calendar year.
I, I, I only prefer the calendar year because I think people's minds in November and December are focused on renewal. And that, that could be just, you know, my own personal problems because I try to solve them all in November and December, so I don't screw them up next year. But I think it's a reflection time. I think it's a time when, when a lot of people regroup, you're mentally regrouping for the next year. Um, but we can do it whenever you guys want. I just wanna see you turn this into a dynamic process between the two, the commissioners and the city manager, to foster the relationship better and, and force the, for, quite frankly, force the commissioners to really think about their direction. So whatever you want on time, whatever you want on timing is good.
Yeah, I think timing wise, um, really there's, there's cases for both ways. You know, when we're working on the budget, that's kind of the time when you're starting to think about some of your capital projects, uh, some of the initiatives and things like that. But then, like you said, in, in the end of the year is typically when things are, are a bit of a lull and would give them more opportunity to be more thoughtful and reflective and thinking about what's coming the next year. I, I'm fine either way.
Well, why, why don't I, why don't I redraft it for a June-July type, uh, thing right away and then, and then I'll redraft it to keep it thereafter at the end of the year.
This is, uh, this is Commissioner Kreidler. Um, I, I kinda like the semi-annual, you know, maybe twice a year, we kinda go over these lists, um, because the diff- two different seasons, obviously summertime, wintertime ideas and, and like you said, the being, um, you know, thoughtful of the year behind us in November and maybe looking forward to the summer, uh, and, you know, May, June, July, whatever we decide there, uh, to get a, you know, get a list together. Uh, I think that would, uh, that would serve this well. I mean, I, I, I personally think a, a meeting like this to kind of steer the ship, as you say, uh, would, would probably be best, not just, not just once a year, but maybe, maybe kind of divide it up so we kind of keep on course to see what changes are happening in those six months.
We could, we could do that. I can, that, that's a, that's a darn good idea.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Ross. I agree John was about to say something right along the same lines. I think you have a very different, uh, mindset in summer. Um, that's certainly the city's busiest season, I believe. Correct me on that if I'm wrong, but it certainly seems like it. Um, and that would, i- it would just keep that portion of the year fresh in all the commissioners' minds to, you know, what might benefit the tourist season or the businesses in the area, uh, that thrive from that, uh, that kind of traffic. And then wintertime, I think it'd be good to focus more on, you know, what we need to do for the citizenry of the city to make their experience being a dwelling of this city as best as it possibly can be, if that makes sense.
Got it.
Good. Anyone else? Anybody else have questions for our city attorney? Okay, well, I think we're on the right track. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, I'll bring something back in February and apologizing, uh, for talking so much, but I, I, I do feel pretty strongly about how this works.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, 10D, the kayak launch. Um, I need a motion to approve the quote from project control engineering, um, for the kayak launch for $3,750.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, limited professional services contract with project control engineering for $3,750.
This is Commissioner Ross. I support.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Um, any discussion about this? All right. I need a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to new business. Um, we're gonna discuss the, we're gonna talk about the camera system for the DPW and the police department. Um, Elaine?
We currently have Dyke Services as our security contractors and they recently installed a couple of cameras in our city offices. Uh, was requested to look into getting cameras installed at DPW and police department as well. These are the quotes that you have for you. The DPW one will be installed at the foyer and also at the northeast corner of the building that, uh, faces the gas pumps and gates. The two in police station, one will be on the counter and the other will be on the back door and it will also be catching the evidence room door.
Hey Elaine, it's Jake. Uh, for the police station, do we have, and I apologize for my ignorance here, do we have an interview room and should that be covered as well if we do have one?
We do have an interview room and it does already have a separate camera system.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Yep.
Um, Elaine, just, this is Lisa. Just so you know, um, I brought this up to the fire department and, um, we'll be taking that forward to them at one of the meetings so that that board can take a look at this also.
Yes, Elaine and I were actually just discussing this, um, about getting cameras at the, at the fire hall. I mean, it's, um, especially at some key entrances and things like that. And it helps with numerous things and it could, you know, be another documentation for response time or, you know, you just wanna keep an eye on things. So I think that's a great idea.
Hey, this is, this is Jake again. Do we need a, um, a motion to waive competitive bidding for this thing?
No, because this is our contractor.
Okay.
This is a, this is a service, so this is adding an additional service.
And I have to do one of the-
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the installation of the cameras at the DPW for $2,495.96 as well as the installation of the cameras in the police department for $3,135.40.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving down to B, resolution, uh, number 001-2021 for the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
This is something that the city is required by state to pass a resolution of exemption if we are not able to meet their, the requirements of the act, uh, which we have contractual obligations with our union that we are not able to. So if we were not able to pass this, we would have to renegotiate union contracts for the benefits.
Okay. I need a motion to approve this resolution 001-2021.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number 001-2021.
Commissioner Callahan, support.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to C, um, liquor license, uh, for local government approval. Um, this is for the, um, on-premises tasting room for the new, uh, Two Rivers Winery that's gonna be occupying the space at 218 South Water Street, which is the old Roasted, correct? Roasted Coffee? Um, yeah. Any questions about this?
Um, this is Lisa Hendrick. The only, I guess the only comment I had, I remember somebody else in the community that was trying to get one and when they called the liquor control, they already said we were several over our limit and that that individual couldn't have one. and that that individual couldn't have one. Um, I don't know if they've ever gotten one or not, but I'm kind of wondering how many, um, uh, they allow.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the allowance is, but I, we don't know how many, um, like, there's a couple of places that have closed so far in our area that could have, um, put those licenses back in the pool. And then there's different, there's all kinds of different types of licenses too. So I'm sure the liquor control commission will do their due diligence and take care of that.
The state keeps very close eye on the numbers and if they're not available, it'll, it'll be made known.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It was just odd that when this one person tried to get one, they, the liquor control told them that they had already given three over their limit. So I found that kind of odd.
Yeah. It can be a lot about timing, Lisa, so.
Mm-hmm.
So this is Commissioner Callahan. So just for clarity on this, in order to get, for, uh, anyone to get about the ball rolling on something like this, they first have to have local approval. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, this is Commissioner Ross. I was going to say if it's a tasting room, it may be a different, uh, license than a, a general, you know, all, all beverages license.
You might be right on that.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not whiskey. It's, uh, I think beer and wine is a, a recreational license from the liquor control.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I need a motion to approve the liquor license for, um, Two Rivers Winery.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the liquor license for the Two Rivers Winery.
This is Commissioner Ross. Do you have support?
Actually, it would be the application. Um, okay. We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we're going to move on to, we added this D, um, just to discuss, uh, the proposal from, and it's not really a formal proposal. We don't have anything in front of us, do we, for, from, uh, Corey Ames, who was trying to get, um, he was, started a discussion about putting, um, some tents in front of restaurants on the street, um, to help with outdoor dining and liquor sales. Unfortunately, Corey Ames is traveling, uh, tonight and could not call in. Um, Elaine, do you have information on this too?
I do have a little bit of information. I did have, uh, an extended conversation with him. Uh, what is that he's looking to do is put up, uh, small tents in parking spots up and down, uh, uh, South Water Street here in front of the restaurants to be able to provide additional service areas for the restaurant to be able to, to serve patrons. Uh, we do know that looking towards February 1st, things might change and some of the restrictions may or may not be lifted, but if they are lifted, more than likely, it's still going to be a limitation on capacity. So this is something that would help bring additional capacity for some of the restaurants. Uh, what it is, is these, these are tents that are going to be, uh, really fully enclosed and they'll be able to seat four to six people in each tent. So with having the, the walls on them, they'll be able to be really socially isolated from anyone around them. Um, I did talk to him about safety issues because that was one of the biggest concerns. It sounds like he's working on a plan for getting some type of barrier or berm or something to be able to isolate these from the street. They will not be extending into the street, uh, neither will the barriers. So we will have the full range and use of the street. Um, I did talk to, uh, the department heads about that. Uh, I heard from Joe Slangster as well. He doesn't have an issue with them as long as they don't impede traffic. Uh, Police Chief Heslop said as long as the tents are protected from cars, he does not see any issue with that, uh, first glance, though we will need to get some type of plan from him before we move forward with this. Also spoke, spoke with, uh, Mike Ittrich about it. One of his biggest concerns is snow plowing and the barriers will have to be able to handle the, the snow load. So not only will they need to have some type of barrier isolating the tents from the street, but they'll also need some type of approach for the snow plowing so that he'll be able to take care of that. Um, some of the building issues, uh, they will need to be inspected to make sure that they are, uh, properly, uh, held down so that they don't blow away and properly constructed. And I understand that, I think they're going to have propane heaters in, so, uh, the building official and potentially the fire chief will need to make sure that they meet the fire safety requirements from the manufacturer. Uh, one of the also, one, one of the other concerns that I have is the insurance liability. Uh, this is something that the restaurants would be responsible for getting the additional coverage for the, the tents for the insurance liability, should they choose to work with him and move forward. What we're really looking for from city commission at this point is to allow the use of the parking spots. Subject to department head review and approval of a submitted plan.
This is Bill Clausen. Bill, uh, I really, I have a couple of them that are in another unit. And, um, we've really had problems, not problems, but, uh, the propane heaters and stuff all have to be at certain heights away from the, the, the roof and half the binning. Uh, the other problem with it is that you're putting off the gases that aren't for us to breathe. Um, and the liability, you know, if we give it, uh, for them to put it in the street, we give them the permission, even though he has insurance, that if somebody wants to sue, they can conceal through the city and come after them. We gave them the, the approval to put it out there. And how many are there going to be? There, there's like three, uh, uh, people, uh, three building businesses down there right now that are closed for remodeling. So how many are actually going to be using them?
Yeah, those are valid points. I mean, I talked to Corey, um, a couple of times. Um, and I also talked to, uh, different department managers about this. Um, and I basically said that, you know, it really, even though the city needs to approve the use of the parking spaces, there, I mean, this, you go to other communities, you know, you go up north in Galing and Gaylord and, I mean, there's tents all over the place. Um, so it can be done, but it just, you know, it's really up to the individual restaurant owner if they want to put something like that in front of their building. Um, and then it's up to us to decide if we, um, would approve the allowance of the parking spaces. So, and right now, you know, it's already mid-January. Hopefully we can start inside dining with the restaurants, um, probably at a limited capacity, but it'll hopefully start February 1st. Um, so there it is. I mean, there, at least it, at least, you know, it, it, it made us look at a bunch of different things and, and have a discussion about this. So that's where we're at right now is we just need to, the first step is to find out if we want to allow, why I need them, uh, to allow the use of the parking spaces in front of the restaurants.
So if I could just continue the discussion a little bit, Cheryl, this is Commissioner Ross. Um, I guess I'd have two questions. One, you, you mentioned it was the discretion of the restaurant owners to do this, which is fine. Um, but two, I feel it is important for us to allow use of the parking spaces. I mean, it's just allowing use of the parking spaces, but the biggest question I'd have is how to adjust the timing of that. This would obviously not be permanent, correct? It would only be during, you know, a foreseen time that we feel it's necessary. Otherwise, we'd conceivably be using up a lot of parking spaces. Um, I mean, maybe that's something we'd want to pursue for the future if our restaurants are that popular some summers, but, which would not be a bad thing. But anyway, I just, I guess, uh, whoever makes the motion, I'm all for it. Uh, especially just to get the parking spaces approved, but, um, would want to assign a finite time in which to approve it for, similar to how we did with the outdoor, excuse me, outdoor beverages. Which I believe we approved till the first meeting in 2022.
Right. Yeah. I think that, uh, the, the purpose of this is, is because of the restrictions that are in place right now. Um, so, you know, the wording could definitely be that, you know, we approve. And of course, there's multiple layers of this. I mean, we're not just saying, yeah, go ahead and throw up a tent. There are
Uh, fully agreed, yes.
Yeah. Many, many things that need to be done. But, um, like I said, it's successful in other communities and it can be successful here. Uh, so, um, it, it needs to be worded with maybe until, um, the majority of the restrictions are lifted or until, you know, restaurant capacity restrictions are lifted to 50% or more or, you know, something along those lines.
This is Bill Clausen. Is, is that being sponsored or adopted? They opted for the restaurants? Do the residents want it in front of theirs? We never, did this, uh, and is not a business owner or a restaurant owner in the city of Marine City, is he?
No, he's not. He's just, uh, someone that's trying to help.
Concerned citizen.
He lives in Cotterville Township.
He's someone that's just trying to help.
Well, like I said, Steve Demick from the health department, anytime that we did anything on the street with any kind of a service or food that had to go through the health department.
I think Corey did contact the health department. Like I said, there are, there are tents in many other communities. So I need a motion. I need a motion if there's no further discussion, um, to allow.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I do have a couple of questions. So helping out again here. So are, how many spots are we looking at out in front of each restaurant? Do we know?
No.
I didn't really have any specific information from him. I, I think at one point in time I saw something on Facebook that he was looking at about 10 tents. I don't know if that was like scattered throughout town or if he's trying to squeeze ten in in front of each restaurant. It wasn't really clear.
I think that should be up to the individual restaurant owner, right? How many, how many parking spaces they wanted to, want to take and, um, or ask for and, you know, how many tents they want to put up and what their staffing is and all that kind of stuff. So I think it would be up to the restaurant owner to ask.
But, excuse you, but with, you know, you also have to think about the other businesses that are going on in town too. Because if you have a restaurant that wants to put up six parking, six tents in six parking spots and each one does six, now you're starting to eat up a lot of parking in town.
I agree.
For the other businesses.
Agreed. I think it should at the least be, you know, we could perhaps do, uh, some percentage of, uh, each business's frontage or percentage of parking spaces.
I think you need to build cost and I think we need to talk to the owners, the business owners of the restaurants and see if they want to do it in front of theirs because they're going to take away a parking spot. It's a good idea that I see what he's trying to do, but do, do they want it in front of their, their, their restaurant?
I think he did discuss it with a few, uh, restaurants on Water Street and a few of the restaurants said that they, um, would be interested um, in, you know, putting up some tents. But like I said, this was, you know, now that the restrictions are supposedly going to be lifted February 1st, I mean, this all could be a moot point. Um, we're just trying to, we're just trying to, uh, get a conversation and, and help out different businesses here, you know, when we can. So.
Yeah. Um, I guess my, my feeling about this, I, I like the idea in general, but for me to, to approve something, I'd like something in front of me saying, this is how we're going to meet the city's concerns regarding safety from vehicles, um, the snow issues, et cetera. You know, it, I, I think the restaurant owners should be coming to us, say for our restaurant, this is what we want to do. If it, if it makes sense, I'm all for it. But, you know, I'm, I, I can't just say yes as a blanket statement when we don't have anything concrete in front of us saying, this is how we're going to address the city's concerns.
Right. Right. Well, we can table it.
No, well, maybe, maybe, maybe there's a, a middle position that we could, you guys could vote that the, the city, you know, just do a, a motion that the city favors, um, this particular idea, but it, it, it needs to be presented in more detail. Site specifics, liability protection and other issues have to be addressed. You know, you could just sort of a consensus vote that you're willing to, you're willing to entertain it, but it's, it needs a lot more fact.
Yeah. I'd like to see the restaurant owners, uh, uh, be on that, that list that they want it.
Yeah. I mean, you know, you know, so, so you can show that you're supporting it, which I think is important, but that you're not, you're not approving any parking space tonight. You're not approving any number. You're, you're saying we're, we're generally supportive of this concept, but we're going to need, you know, facts and, uh, and presentations made in writing and before the board and give them something to vote on, like, like, like you were just saying.
Right.
This is, this is Commissioner Callahan. I do have one comment to make. I do believe that, uh, during, um, maritime Christmas, um, a special, a permit was put in by a restaurant to, uh, have something similar put out in front of their restaurant and parking spots. And, um, that permit was turned down begin with the comment that if I allow you to do it, I'm going to have to allow every other restaurant to do it. And we were in the same situation we are now. So I don't know where that mindset has changed. You know, but I, I do think that we have to take that in consideration that that was, that this has been turned down before with a special permit. So, you know, by people who, you know, needed to make those decisions. So, and it was a restaurant that was, that was ready to do something with it. So I just want to bring that up.
Um, this is Commissioner Hendrick. I, I have to agree with Commissioner Bryson and our attorney, um, without having a whole lot of information, because I know there was one poor restaurant that wanted to just add in the summertime, just want to add, um, picnic tables and the health department turned them down, telling them that they couldn't do it because it wasn't part of their original, uh, layout. So, um, and then the other thing I heard too was that if you're all in the same family, you can have a tent with all sides. But if it's not, then one side has to be open. And I think that's from the health department also.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, like I said, I talked to, to, um, Corey Ames a couple of different times and, you know, I, we went through a whole laundry list of stuff because, you know, like Bill had said earlier, you know, there's several restaurants right now that are taking advantage of the downtime to remodel and, or just close and regroup or whatever. And, um, you know, he, he's just, he just saw other communities, um, be successful with doing some outdoor things and he was just trying to help. So, um, if we want to just take a consensus, consensus vote like, um, our city attorney recommended, you want to table it, you know, for further discussion, you know, however you want to proceed.
Well, this is, uh, this, go, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah. This is Commissioner Callahan. No, I, 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 don't get me wrong. I, I fully support this, but we need, we need more information. We may need more guidelines, what's going to happen, you know, and, and before we can just approve this.
Yeah. Go ahead. This is, this is.
Go ahead.
Well, this is, uh, Commissioner Kreidler. I, I just think that, um, you know, there are definitely some ways to do these things. Um, you know, you could put concrete barriers along the edge of the parking spaces that the tents are attached to. That would keep them from blowing away. There's great, there's great ways to do this. We don't know each specific sit, situation. to do this. We don't know each specific situation, what they're gonna need until we, until they ask. And this is not, we're not gonna force a tent in front of your business. We're, we're allowing them to use that space and that, that we're already allowing, we're already spending millions of dollars on those spaces for people to park their cars there to, to enjoy those restaurants. And in this time, maybe they could use those parking spaces to succeed as a restaurant, you know.
Yeah, Bill Claussen, I'd like to make a motion to table it. Did you hear that?
Yes.
A motion to table.
I need a second.
Um, question, is the table to, just to require more information?
Yeah.
All right, I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this to the next meeting. And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
No.
Mayor Verkaman?
No.
Commissioner Bryson?
No.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so our original discussion was just to allow the use of the parking spots. That's it. Just allow the use of the parking spots. The individual restaurants have to request them and then all the other safety guidelines and Health Department guidelines and everything else will be put in motion.
It would be similar to how we do our special event permits. It would be subject to department head approval.
Right, they can't go out and put something up willy-nilly without it, you know, meeting that. The only thing that we'd be approving is the utilization of some parking spaces.
Correct.
Bob, what, what was how you put it?
Well, I was, I was, I was framing it in terms of a vote supporting the use of the parking spaces that the city, the city commission supports the use of the parking spaces, subject to receiving additional information concerning all of the safety aspects and the liability aspects.
Okay, can we include that in the motion?
This is Jake. I'll make a motion that the city in general approves the use of utilizing parking spaces for restaurants through the special event, or I'm sorry, the special event permitting process addressing safety and liability concerns.
I can support that. This is Commissioner Ross.
Okay, we have a motion and a sec, and a support, and now I need another roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to the city manager's report. Elaine?
I have attended the historical commission meeting since our last approval, I'm sorry, since my last report. Also wanted to update everyone that sometime this summer with our contractual obligation for the water tower. They're gonna be doing some painting and washing the interior. So we'll be staffing the plant 24/7 to maintain the water flow in the city. I've also have, been having discussions with a representative from a company that provides electronic vehicle chargers and I'm trying to get some information about how we can work through some grants to get the electronic vehicle charger that we have in the city upgraded.
Okay, anybody have any questions for city manager?
This is Commissioner Callahan. Elaine, just a quick question. How often are the, the Porta-Jons that we have in town here, how often are they cleaned in the winter time? Do you know?
I don't know offhand. I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
Is there an issue, I take it?
Yeah, we've had people come in and say they're pretty nasty, just so you know.
I'll get with Mike on that to correct it.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to Commissioner Privilege. I'm gonna go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Bryson, do you have anything?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes, I just wanted to say that congratulations to the Mariner football team. They did a great job. It was a messed up season, the poor kids, but they did their best. And I think the whole town is certainly proud of as far as they went in the season this year and they did just an outstanding job.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes, I just wanna congratulate and thank the Chamber of Commerce and all of our volunteers who helped pull off the chili cook-off last weekend over there at 300 Broadway. It was a much bigger success than any of us expected it to be. So it was fun. I think the community had a great time. You know, anybody that showed up had a great time and all the restaurants that participated ran out of chili. So it was a good thing and I think we're gonna continue to do that every year. So it's gonna be an annual event. So it's gonna grow. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Claussen?
Yeah, the planning commission didn't meet. We didn't have a meeting, so I have nothing to report on that. So, everybody stay healthy. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kreidler?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
I just wanted to say thanks to the group responsible for putting up the ice rink. I haven't gotten to use it yet, but I'm very excited to and the lights look really great. I think I was done with a private partnership because there's a sign for the sponsorship of a light. So, just very cool. I think it's really great for our downtown and kudos to those who helped put it together. Other than that, I have nothing further.
Good. Yes, I too just wanted to do a shout out to all those involved in the chili cook-off. It was a lot of fun. I know that I participated through the little bar. I made white chicken chili and it, it, I served out for probably an hour and a half straight of serving chili and then I ran out about a half hour before the event ended. But there were, it was a night, beautiful turnout. Everybody was enjoying the fire pits and the hot chocolate and the music playing and, you know, under the backdrop of the ice rink with all the lights, it was, and, you know, 300 Broadway, I mean, it was, it was, it was pretty cool. So, looking forward to next year. We are doing our next thing that we're gonna be doing at 300 Broadway is called the Winter Wonderland Festival. We looked at, we did approve the permit for it today. It's gonna be on Saturday, February 6th, from 1 to 6. And again, it'd be, it's gonna be at the 300 Broadway. Dress warm. There's a schedule of events, everything from a disc jockey to live music, ice skating performances. We're gonna be doing a Taste of Marine City where all of the local restaurants are gonna be offering food from 2 to 4. We got fire performers. We have a disc jockey. There's gonna be all kinds of stuff. So keep that in mind, write it on your calendars. Again, February 6th from 1 to 6 at 300 Broadway, dressed for the event. And my last thing is I was at Channel 6 yesterday filming my first segment of The Mayor Minute, is what I'm calling it. I discussed volunteerism and all kinds of things that are gonna be happening in our city. I'm very excited to talk about the plans that are happening at the Bell River. Our Bell River finally is gonna be utilized more. There's three different businesses, or three different things I should say, happening on the Bell River. Everything from the kayak launch to a fishing charter service and, and a gas dock coming in with some transient docking. So just exciting things that are happening in Marine City. I wanna keep everybody positive. And we've had a pretty good sized meeting here, so thank everyone for tuning in and we will see you next time. Motion to adjourn.
So moved, Commissioner Ross?
Support, Callahan.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Aye.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.